Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us. This is the regular city council meeting of September tenth, the city of Rockport. I'll ask you to stand and join with us in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Randell.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic for its citizens, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat. We'll have a roll call to establish presence of quorum. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor here. We do have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. We have got several folks that want to talk on several different issues, so we will call you when that issue comes up. You can do it when that one's coming up for action by the council. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. I do have one citizen to be heard. I'm sorry. I see it right down here now. Andrew Kane, citizen to be heard.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Andrew Kane, twenty-one oh six Lakeview Drive. Just wanted to bring your attention to a little petition we started less than five days ago that right now has four hundred and eighty-seven signatures. So I'm not sure if you're aware of it, so I'll read it to you. As a concerned citizen of Ranses County, Texas, I dispute the establishment of a TIRS, tax increment reinvestment zone, in the primary areas of downtown Rockport under ordinance nineteen forty-six of the city of Rockport. The creation of this zone is not just a stupid decision. It deeply affects me and many residents like me. I firmly believe that public tax dollars should not fund private development in Ranses County. The belief is grounded in the principle that such of the use of public funds contravenes the popular opinion of its residents. In addition, economic studies often highlight that TIRS can distort market behavior and create inequality amongst city regions. It is implemented, if it is implemented, taxpayers myself and others living outside TIRS would have a higher tax burden. Our hard-earned money will enrich private developers rather than supporting public services that enhance our lives. This allocation of funds, of public funds, would not reflect our community's needs and choices. Ranses County is our home, not a ticket for private developers to profit from our resources. There's more at stake here than just our tax dollars. It's about our democratic rights to dictate how our taxes are used. Notice ordinance nineteen forty-six of the city of Rockport, our public funds, our public money should be our public needs, not private pockets. Join me to express this shared concern, please sign this petition to oppose TIRS of downtown Rockport. How much time left in my three minutes? Okay, so, this is like I said, just, the reason why I did this is because the newspaper said there's overwhelming support. It's overwhelmingly in favor of the, uh, to do the TIRS, and I wanted y'all to get a different perspective because without all members of an echo chamber that communicates and emails like a political lobbyist to get their people here at a certain time, where all private individuals would not connect in each other or organization. Four hundred and ninety-six signatures. That's a lot of signatures. To be exact, it's about eight times more votes than any of y'all got. There's more people in this room tonight than any of y'all got at your last election. I want you to think about that. Because I hear y'all saying we have a mandate to do what the people elected us. Never gotten a vote, didn't get any votes last election, no competition, mayor, you didn't get a vote, you didn't get any votes. I think you got sixty votes. There's sixty people in this house. So I want y'all to reach out, besides echo chambers of the organized groups or lobbyist groups in this town. There's four hundred and ninety-six names of Rockport citizens here. And I was going to read them all, like y'all did last time, but that's probably a waste of everybody's time. You've got to understand, open your eyes and listen. There's a lot of people that want questions asked. I'm not saying vote no. I'm saying pump the brakes, have a town hall, let our questions get asked. But I just want to update you on the petition. It's not an official petition. But for every person that signed this petition, three started filling it out, but this change.org requires your email address and your address and free balance for everyone that signs. So I had about two thousand start signing this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
Mayor, I'm going to remove item one under the consent agenda.
Okay.
That's the only item.
Item number one, consent agenda, consider approval of the city council minutes for August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, city council regular meeting.
Uh, Mayor, I just ask that, uh, all the, the letters of support and opposition, uh, from last meeting be, be put into the record.
I have checked with city secretary, and we can enter all those in the city website along with this agenda. If that would support, take care of that, and have them there where you can see them. If you need any direction on where to find that on the website, city secretary can tell you. All right? I'm going to move two items off the end of the agenda because they are very short and lived and they won't. Okay.
I move to approve item one under the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Now, we'll call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you for keeping me straight there. We've got two very short items on the end of the agenda that will be here for a long time, sitting around waiting. So we're going to move them up. Item number sixteen, consider request tree and landscape, landscape committee to utilize funds from the tree preservation mitigation account in the amount of two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars for the purpose of covering the overage of the original funding approved by the city council for the lease of billboards, total cost thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Ms. Dietrich.
Um, so, as you're aware, the tree committee got approval for twelve thousand, where'd it go? Twelve thousand three hundred dollars to lease billboards last year. And, and we did. But one of the billboards, you couldn't see it. I mean, you couldn't read it. It was so, it was awful. So they traded it for another one, uh, north of town that is really visible, has great coverage, but it cost a little more. And so what we're asking for is an additional two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars to cover that cost. And then we'll still have two billboards, but one will have a lot better coverage.
Questions, council?
Make a motion to approve agenda item number sixteen.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Now, we'll call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, consider request the tree and landscape committee to utilize funds from the tree preservation mitigation account in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred dollars for the purpose of removing dead wood from the trees of Wandering Oaks Park. Ms. Dietrich.
Okay, this has gone back and forth quite a bit. So Wandering Oaks Park is deeded to the city. It, it belongs to the city, and the trees in the park belong to the city. However, when Wandering Oaks was created, the, there was an agreement that the HOA would maintain the park. You know, the, the, the general maintenance, mowing, weed eating, maintaining the sprinkler system, and they do. Um, but there is a lot of dead wood in those trees. And we've already had to remove one huge dead tree. Still don't know why it died. Um, and we'd like to get the dead wood trimmed out, and we feel like, because it is, belonged to the city, it is city trees, that we need to go ahead and do that. I do have Ms. Wapler here with the HOA, um, if you have questions for her. But this, we got two bids, one for ten thousand five hundred, I think, and another for ninety-eight hundred, and the tree committee chose the ninety-eight hundred dollar bid. And that is to remove it, get all the dead wood, clean up the trees, and remove it all. There's a picture in there of one of the trees. Ten thousand two fifty was the other bid.
Questions, council?
Can I just make a comment on this?
Yes, I see.
I know there's a lot of back and forths, especially with the deed being with the, the city and with the HOA and everything. Can we please, in future references, when we're having HOA make parks inside of there, that we need to be careful of not taking control of everything? Because if they're going to have their parks, then they should be able to take care of it having HOA. That's what they're, that's what HOA residents are paying for, instead of having to have the, on the cap, the backs of the taxpayer for future references. Um, and right now I get it from litigation funds from the tree being cut down, but I just feel like, let's be very careful not deed those things so easily out to the city. So I just want to make that comment for future references. I get, right now, this is where we're at. We have, we have to be responsible so it doesn't fall on someone, hurt someone, but yes, I just want to make sure we put that comment out there.
I appreciate that.
Other questions, council?
Is it normal, uh, for us in the parks, is it normal for us to do in-house tree trimming? Or do our parks department normally do the tree trimming, or is we contract?
I do not believe our parks department does that sort of tree trimming. No, we still contract it.
Okay, gotcha.
Other questions?
I move to approve seventeen on the minute.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Now, we'll call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is going to be number five. We're moving number five up to the next item. It's under budget and tax rate-related items. Consider approval of the single reading of ordinance number nineteen fifty-four authorizing the issuance of three million seventy-five thousand dollars in principal amount of city Rockport, Texas Tax Note Series twenty twenty-four, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase letter, and all other instruments, procedures related thereto. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank, thank you.
Before, before you start, I'd like, you know, there's three things on your desk. They are the, um, the tax code series, the two letters of sales, the term sheet and letter of sale, and then the ordinance. Um, those were just, we got our interest rates today, so.
And Mr. Patrick Kane, I do have your note up here wishing to address this. Is he here? I hadn't seen him yet.
Wanted to read.
Okay. Go. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry, sorry for the, the late, um, switch out. There was a placeholder in there, but bond council's been working on it as well as our financial advisors group. Um, they, uh, went out and, uh, secured three bids, uh, beginning with different banks, seeing who was interested in it. Um, we did get three, three bids, um, and the lowest one that we're, we're currently structured with is at three point seven four percent. So we were thinking it was going to be in the four, about the four percent range. But if they were able to get one at even a lower rate, so kudos to, to, to that. Um, this bond issuance, uh, is to support the budget, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Um, and again, as our discussions, we went through, as we were trying to figure out how we could get some more leeway in our MNO for, uh, a five percent COLA for the employees, as well as looking at getting an officer if we could secure a grant. And that is still indeed the case. But what this is doing is, again, is it is trying to get some of the, the more fixed asset-based items and projects out of the, out of the MNO so I can get it onto the interest and sinking fund side. And so that's what this debt we have to, would be supporting. Per bond council, this can be approved on one, one reading. Uh, the, the, the legal dialogue is, is behind it. I won't bother to go through that, but, uh, we're asking that this be approved. Again, what this, we have not actually per, we have not actually taken out the bond. This is just notice. Uh, the actual, if this is approved, the actual bond sale, uh, would, would fund on, uh, October first. If this is not, if this is, council does not turn this, uh, approve of this, then that whole deal would be unwound.
Thank you. We have one citizen who wished to address this, and again, Patrick Kane is not here.
Thank you. Wanted to read.
We'll read. Just wanted to be sure.
Patrick Kane, eleven twenty-three East Cedar Street, Rockport. Yet again, the city is misrepresenting information. The fiscal analysis states the approximately three million forty thousand dollars principal dollar amount is roughly what two cents added to the interest and sinking side of the tax rate will support in the form of a seven-year tax note. What you should have been told is the two-cent increase was due to the rising debt payments associated with eight loans the city took out between two thousand twelve and two thousand twenty-two. The tax rate was calculated by the tax assessor and does not include this loan. If you recall, you were told during the budget workshop that the debt had to be in place before it could be included in the tax rate calculation. So this proposed loan clearly wasn't part of the equation for the two-cent increase. Unless the city is retiring a lot of debt this year, our tax rate will go up again next year. Isn't a fifty-two point two percent increase over the last three years enough already? It is ridiculous to approve any debt on a first and only reading. This is a change to past practice, and it denies that citizens an opportunity to engage in the process. Do you really think four days, two of which are over the weekend, is enough time for citizens to understand the issue and to provide input? I also find it comical that the city staff highlighted part of the local government code showing a resolution order or ordinance calling an election to authorize debt as a justification for not needing a second reading. If the city is proposing to put this loan on the ballot, I am all for it. However, that clearly isn't happening. Please vote no on this agenda item and require staff to resubmit the request as two readings. Also, ask them to show scheduled principal and interest payments for all outstanding loans so you know the impact of adding three million dollars in debt. This information should already have been purveyed, uh, should, excuse me. This information should already have been included in the agenda packet. However, there have no, they have no reason to provide it if you're not going to demand this information.
Questions, council?
We, uh, we started discussing this back in the budget process, and, and we, April, May, right? And this is, this is all.
This was the first budget, budget work session we had. We started with this.
And this is added into our budget and to our tax rate as we, as we're moving forward. Any cha, any change or deviation from that would really put us behind the curve.
We, that's what we based everything on. If you change it, we'll change it. But, yes, sir. Since we started with this on day one, this has been the message through all of our budget work sessions and all of our public hearings that this was the plan. But we're going to do what your direction is, for sure.
Other questions? If there are no other questions, we'll have a motion.
I move to approve item five as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Now, I'll call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Next item on the agenda, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, city of Rockport budget. We're going to hold a public hearing and receive comments for or against the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. We are at six forty-seven PM. We are in public hearing. Are there those here who wish to address the budget we're about to be taking a vote on? If so, come up to the podium and speak your piece. You'll have three minutes. If there's nobody coming, council? Ah, there is a lady. Yes, ma'am. I didn't see you there. Come right on up.
I haven't, I haven't been to one of these things for a long time, so I'm not quite sure if I'm on the right page or not. But if it's about increasing taxes, um, I'm a struggling retired teacher. And if I actually had to live on what I make, I'd be poverty level. Luckily, I'm blessed and I'm, well, I won't say cursed. I've got rental property also. And if it weren't for that, um, I would, like I said, you know, sixteen hundred dollars a month is not much. So I get, what I'm trying to say is, I, I'm struggling. You know, I have to pay insurance, have to pay taxes, and I really don't want to put this burden on my renters. Because I've one, one gentleman I've had pre Harvey, and we suffered through all this, suffered through the rain coming through his, his ceiling, and I just, it's hard for me to raise rent on him. And that's what, it, it, you know, it's, it's my business in a way, because I can't survive without it. And it's, I hate to put the burden on them, and I don't know if y'all realize the trickling effect of, um, of having to raise rent and everything. And I really don't like politics. I really don't, but I've kind of been forced into it, so. I just want to, please don't raise the, the taxes anymore. It's, it's, it's really a hard burden. It's like, oh, here's insurance being raised. Here's this insurance. And I know I'm a bit on a timeline when I see that. So anyhow, and I don't know how many people in here are struggling also. But, um, it reminds me of the Boston Tea Party type, you know, situation. So please consider that. I know that town wants to develop, and I'm for that and not against that, but I, I just can't handle all this increase in taxes. So please consider all of, of us, and let me see if I got anything. So, any.
My dear, your name.
Oh, Terry Sederbo. You're welcome. Okay, well, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? For the sake of those of you that may not have attended any of our workshops and that kind of thing, the council takes very seriously doing a tax increase or whatever we're doing with taxes for folks in our town. And we realize that there are folks that live on limited incomes, and it's difficult to get by. As we said during some of our meetings, the city also has bills we have to pay. And if we don't pay them, then we start cutting people or we cut services because we can't do the things we normally do. We are at the point with our general fund reserves that if we don't do something to get more money in, we're going to lose the ability to issue any kind of bonds because our bond rating will go under ninety, under, low enough that we won't be able to sell bonds if we get less than ninety days in reserve. And we're at a hundred and eleven right now. So we have to do something. We don't enjoy doing that. If, we've talked about raising taxes before, and it's one of those things that we are not inclined to do anymore that is absolutely necessary, but in this case, we feel it's necessary. Counsel, you heard the report. Do I have other questions?
I'd just like to add, kind of add on to what you said, Mayor. The last three budgets, we, we've been able to reduce the tax rate from the prior year uh, with, with the increased, uh, valuations that we've been given. Uh, that also said we've been operating on a deficit budget. I won't say deficit. We've been operating out of reserves uh, to, to balance the budget, but our, our savings account is dwindled to a hundred, a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven days. And we can't be fiscally responsible enough to pass another deficit budget this year, uh, and operate out of those reserves. Uh, we, if y'all heard from the school district, they are passing a pretty significant deficit budget. They're a little different, the way they're funded through the state and everything. The county is, is got a little bit healthier reserve budget, but they are also operating, uh, uh, on a deficit budget this year. So it's just, it's just one of those things that's hitting everybody in the county and all, all the entities, unfortunately, kind of at the same time. In our, I said la, in the last meeting, our, our budget is increased two percent over last year's. Ma'am? Joe, I'm sorry, the general fund, the general fund budget is two percent. So it's pretty flat over what we've had last year. Yeah, that's all, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Every year, my property taxes have gone up. I'm like that woman over there. I'm retired on a fixed income. I, I know people personally that have to move, they have to leave because they can't afford this. Now, there's been a lot of, a lot of things that you've done in the courthouse. You got the, the, uh, art center. Now the, the drainage going in. And, uh, there's no, uh, there's, it makes no sense to me at all. Our taxes go up every year, every year. And, uh, there's no transparency. I mean, I didn't even know about the art center. That was like behind closed doors. And, uh, we just can't afford this. This is crazy. I love Rock, Rockport. I love it here. And, uh, but I might be the one, another one that has to leave because, because he can't afford to live here, me and my wife. So, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir. I, I'd like to, to point out one thing for you. The art center was paid for by donation. We need your name and address, please, sir. I didn't ask you for it when you came up there. What is it?
Everybody's seen all my posts on Facebook, so. My name is Brett Christensen.
Okay.
I live at thirty-one Lauderdale Drive.
Thank you, sir. But the art center was paid for by donations, and it was debt-free when it was finished. It was not paid for by taxes. Anyone else? Now, close the public hearing. Counsel, do I have a motion?
I move to approve item two as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or question?
Well, I guess I just, I just wanted to make a comment. I didn't know we were going right into it. Sorry. Um, I appreciate everyone coming out and talking about the tax rate. It's not easy to raise taxes. I know we're all hurting here. Um, we do have inflation, and we have to also play into our budget as well, just like everyone else in the city, the county, every situation. Um, I think that we're figuring, I've looked at the budget. I've asked my questions. Um, they kept it very lean. We were only giving one request this year that people asked for, and that was a police officer. I just want to make sure that's very clear. We're not spending just to spend. We're spending the things that we need to spend on. Um, and on top of that, with our budget this year, I know, what, what is the, um, inflation rate right now?
It's like three percent right now.
And we did about two and a half percent. That's what we played into our budget this year?
It's, yeah, right around there, two.
Okay.
At least we started out at like two, two percent. Right for this request, your general one, it's six point three percent.
Oh, increase?
Yes.
But that factors in the, the COLA and the, and the police officer. If you take those out, then we're back at the.
So we've had multiple budget meetings. We've had people, um, everyone's welcome to come. Everyone's welcome to ask questions, everything like that. So I, the transparency thing is out there. Everyone's welcome. It, we don't take this lightly, as Mayor said. It's just something that we have to really take in consideration to make sure that we can pay the services that these citizens deserve at the end of the day. And if we can't afford it, and our reserve goes down, we will go bankrupt, and we will not be able to do departments. And that's how bad it can become if we do not do our diligence and make sure that we're raising enough funds to make the city run. Um, I wanted to say thank you guys for your budget this year. I, I went through it. I mean, it's very, very lean. It's very conservative, and I do appreciate that. Um, if there was something to cut, I think we could have found something to cut. I mean, we went through every day, trying it back and forth. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. We did what we could to make the best of what we have right now. So we just have to kind of keep moving forward, and hopefully we can find out other ways to make these taxes go less for our citizens. I mean, there are other options. We need to start utilizing them and making sure that they happen around here.
Anyone else?
Can I have a read?
No, sir. Any other questions, council? I have a motion and a second. We'll call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Passes. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of second final reading ordinance number nineteen forty-nine approving the assessment and renditions for the twenty twenty-four taxable property as submitted by the appraisal district, levying a tax rate of one hundred dollar valuation for the city of Rockport, Ranses County, Texas for the tax year twenty twenty-four of zero point two three five five four four for the purpose of maintenance and operation and zero point one six nine seven five zero of zero point two three five five four four for the purpose of maintenance and operation and zero point one six nine seven five zero for the payment of principal and interest on debt for the city for total tax rate of zero point four zero five two nine four, providing for a lien on all real and personal property to secure payment of taxes due therein, containing severability clause, repealing all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Mr. Sorrell?
Uh, you, you said it well, this second reading, no, no changes.
Counsel, any questions? Not. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item three as presented.
Do I have a second?
Say second.
I have a motion and second. Any further question? Yes, sir.
I'm not sure you read the caption for the budget item the last, the last time. Uh, so if we can just have the caption read.
There, there.
About taking it.
Talk about the, the two lines below that. I just stopped on any of the paragraphs.
I think, yeah, I think you just went straight from public hearing to consideration of the ordinance without reading the caption for the ordinance. At least none of us could remember that if you read it.
So it's Ordinance nineteen forty-eight.
Item two, Romanu.
And item two? I thought I read it. I, I am, I can see notes down here. I put where I found the typos, so I didn't read it. All right. Going back to number two. Don't know how I managed to do that. Consider Approval with Single Reading of Ordinance Number nineteen forty-eight, adopting a budget and appropriating resources for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in accordance with existing statutory requirements, repealing all conflicting ordinances, containing severability clause, and providing for an effective date, and thank you. Very necessary thing to do. I appreciate it.
How would you like to handle that motion? Just approve, do I need to rescind the, the previous?
Just call the vote.
I move to approve item two point two as presented.
I have a motion and a second. We discussed it already. One more time after it was properly read, we're calling for a vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. I regret that. We just got through talking about number three.
You read, he didn't read it.
Okay.
Who made the motion? Who made the second?
I have a motion and a second, right? All right. On item number three, any other question? We have a motion and a second. If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It is also unanimous. Item number four. Consider Approval to Ratify the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Property Tax Increase to Support the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Annual Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Sorrell?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, this is just a ratification of the tax rate. It's, it's required by law that if, if, if taxes are increased, that we have to ratify the, the rate. And so we're asking counsel to please ratify the rate.
Right. Questions, counsel?
Can you just go a little bit more into like summarize that so people understand what you mean by that?
It's, 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 it's per, per law. Um, I don't think I did a caption on this, on this one.
When there's more revenue being raised by, by the tax rate, you have to ratify that tax increase that supports the budget that y'all already approved. So it's just a ratification of what y'all have already done. It's just required by law that.
No, there's no special verbiage in the, in the motion?
No, just, you can, you can just do it. It's, it's uh basically, it's requiring you to vote twice on things that you have already done.
It's redundant, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's out there so that we're saying.
We just need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the number four.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Also, okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Section number seven, Ordinances, Resolutions, Public Hearing. I have two cards for people that want to speak on this particular item. First is from Don Van de Veer Van.
Van De Veer.
Yes, sir. Come right ahead to speak.
Thank y'all. Um, bring to attention, uh, there's been some bad rumors that go around what we're trying to do. We're trying to build some duplexes, upscale duplexes. And we have real property here. We've had like fifteen years. We do not do section eight. We never will, never did. We have a fifteen-year track record. And of the duplexes we've built already, not one complaint has ever come out of the city, not one. These are on north, uh, I'm sorry, south, uh, South Vern and South Cosset. Now, what we're trying to do is build twelve, uh, there are actually six duplexes and there'll be twelve units. It'll bring a, it'll bring a tax base of over four million dollars to this county, to the city. And so we're building upscale, we're actually trying to change a little bit of that area. Catacore, that's an apartment complex. It's not a great upscale one, so we're taking a chance, but we think it's a great thing. The complex is, as far as cost-wise, it's upscale. We have the roof pitch, everything, all the bedrooms upstairs are all vaulted ceilings. It has a garage. We're not looking for anybody who wants to seize other people's items, so they all have garages. And if you look at it, they're actually, it's a gorgeous plan. And the price range we're in is a great price range, and that's what we've always done. We, we're always price conscious. Other thing is, um, on East Linden, right there at South Church, that's not developed on the South Church, we've agreed to go ahead and develop that as far as the pavement, um, sewer and sewer and water taps. We've already agreed to that and we're gonna do it at the length of our lot, which is, uh, six lots. So, we're actually adding a lot to this. We're actually helping with the city on the, on doing that. They've, they've agreed to that, uh, the planning, uh, our, our engineer got involved in that and it's, it's all, it's all looks pretty good. I mean, adding to the tax base, I think it's really important, especially if you have a quality project. We love trees. We don't want to cut down trees. I live here. I've been living here eight years. Everybody, I love trees. So, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can to save what we can, but this definitely will help the tax base here. And it's an upscale project on a very good cost basis.
Thank you, sir. I turned the next to page and I didn't read what it was you were gonna be talking about, I don't believe, because once you started, I thought, I didn't even look at this. Request for J W T C to change the zoning land located at eleven seventeen North Live Oak Street. And you told us what it is you want to do. Ms. Dietrich, you have anything else?
Are you doing a public hearing or?
Yes, we're going to have it as soon as. Very good. You heard what the gentleman plans on doing with his property. This is public hearing. It is seven oh seven. And those of you that might be here to discuss that, we appreciate it. And I've still got one other, there it is. Separated the cards too. Sue Pash. Wanted to address this subject too. Get right back with you. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Sue Pash, eleven oh eight North Live Oak Street, directly across the street from the property that this gentleman is, is proposing to rezone. Built a house that, on our lot, uh, twenty-two years ago in a single-family neighborhood. Yes, there are other, are other, uh, multifamily, uh, complexes down the street. But on our, our street, um, there would, uh, is only single-family, and when we built it, there was no houses around us at all. There, I've welcomed many neighbors and single-family homes on the block, all around me. It's, um, a problem to have building done, but, uh, many, there were twenty-nine opposition letters that were brought to the Planning and Zoning Committee. So I was really surprised when I was here for that meeting that it passed to be approved, to be presented to you. Twenty-nine oppositions. Many reasons, you know, worrying about the trees, worrying about the wildlife. There's a whole herd of deer that comes through there every, every day. You know, so all those kind of reasons. I don't want to see it turned into concrete and sidewalks and, and more traffic, um, coming through there. Just, you know, and, and I'm not alone in the opposition to it. Please take into consideration that the neighbors around are opposed to that rezoning of that property.
Thank you, Ms. Pash. Ms. Dietrich? Anyone else that wanted to address this issue? I had those two cards. Anyone else under a public hearing want to speak to this issue? If not, Ms. Dietrich, close public hearing, back on regular.
Good evening. Um, so this rezone came to us, and P and Z voted unanimously to recommend approval. We did get twenty-eight objections to, to the, uh, rezone, and of those twenty-eight, three were within the two-hundred-foot boundary. The others were not. Um, and most of the objections were that they were concerned about it being section eight, that they were concerned about the trees, mostly. There are some very large, beautiful trees on that lot. When this, um, they've actually been planning this development for about two years. When they first came, the, um, the exhibit they were wanting to do was put a road down the middle of the lots to replat it. It originally is four, um, eight lots. It, Live Oak on the east side and Church Street, which is currently undeveloped on the west side. So they were gonna put a road down the middle. Well, to do that, they were gonna lose seventy-two-inch oak tree and a thirty-six-inch oak tree, and they, they didn't want to do that. And although it is costing them more, they're gonna develop the Church Street right away. It's already a dedicated right away. And they will lose some trees, but they're much smaller. And where they're stopping, there is a very large, I believe it's seventy-two inch, that won't, that makes the cut, that won't be taken out. And so they're serious about their trees. Now, will they be able to save every single one when they start putting in the duplexes? I couldn't tell you. They can't tell you, but they've expressed to me that they are certainly gonna try. I believe that P and Z went ahead and, and passed it with all the objections because across the street, also on Live Oak, there are other duplexes. The apartment complex on the corner and then some other, I can't remember if the little houses across from the ball field are duplexes or not, but, um, that's like a multifamily, um, project as well. And I think that's why they went ahead and passed it because it's, it's always there. All of the exhibits they've shown me have been very upscale, um, very nice duplexes. I believe you have photos in there. But, um, that's what I got. Do you have any questions?
Questions, counsel?
I have a few comments. Um, I've talked to multiple of those twenty-nine objections. I cannot personally ignore twenty-nine objections to a property in their, in their community. Multiple of them that did not mention, even mention section eight. It was the look of their, their area, where they live. They want a certain look. They want to keep the single-family residence. It is the trees, it is the land. Um, so I just want to make sure that I, I did take the time out to, to reach out to some of these, because I was like, twenty-nine objections and still passed. That, that took me back. Like, that took me back. Yes, maybe three might be in the footprint, but that's still twenty-nine people that live in that area. That's their home and area, so that, it is, to me. That's how I take it. We're not looking at just the two-hundred square foot. We're taking in that people that live in that community. They don't want it there.
Right.
So we do, I really, to me, that's a very important factor in this decision. Um, I, I'll leave it to everyone else to kind of think.
Others? Anyone else got a comment? Yes, sir?
Carrie, I want to make sure, uh, I understand, in that concise area there, we have not done a change like this before that wasn't for a building that was pre-existing because of annexation, so is it fair?
I couldn't tell you that.
I was gonna say.
I don't.
This, this has not been done in that area, zoning change like this before, other than the grandfather of building that was after annexation. So this is, this would be a precedent in that area?
Yeah, not since I've been here.
Okay. And how long was that roughly? I follow that.
Uh, it came in August the twenty-one.
Okay. And, uh, one more question. The folks that are within the two-hundred-foot zone, uh, and what have you, that received the letters, all the letters that you got back, um, if it was a couple of them, several of them there, they were all in opposition, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so no one in the two-hundred-foot zone was for?
No. Well, they didn't respond if they were.
Okay. But all, everything you did receive was in opposition?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's important, oh, yeah, sorry. It is important to notice, though, you know, nine out of the fourteen property owners within that two-hundred-feet zone do not even have mailing addresses within Rockport. So that could have been a participation issue alone. Um, of the three, you know, we do still need to consider the preference of the three within and then the twenty-eight outside of, well, it would be twenty-five outside. When you mentioned what was adjacent within that area, apartment complex, um, other duplexes, are any of those directly within the two-hundred feet?
The, um, the duplexes are. And I think, well, you have a map in your, I don't know if I have it in my file.
The, the retirement center, the, I say retirement, the.
That's the slur?
Yeah, that, that's, that'll be the two-hundred-foot. Other than that, it'd be.
The duplexes were, and the apartment complex was. And then several across the street, across Live Oak, the property directly south.
But it's really just the corner of the property of the apartment complex, not the.
But the property owner still gets a letter, even if it's this much, we try to, we probably oversend because we try to make sure that everybody within the two-hundred gets a letter.
Would, uh, start, uh, what is the issue with, uh, not keeping it a single-family? Uh, I, I know the homes, the homes that you're, that you're building in other areas of, of town, they look great. And they, they hit a, they hit a market that is needed here. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, 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 go ahead.
But, you know, those, those other houses that y'all built in our building, um, look great, and then they hit a, a market that's needed here, is, is, we call it affordable housing, or whatever that, whatever that word is, just, just today. But why, why the duplexes? And I, I think, I think at P and Z, the duplex, you were saying it was gonna be around four hundred?
Uh, it's gonna range from three thirty to four twenty-five, four thirty, uh, depends on how many upgrades we put on it. Uh, and that's what we're gonna, we're trying to figure out, uh, it, it'll be roughly probably in around four hundred, but we think they're, yeah, for Rockport, that's important. Uh, duplex, it's, it has three bedrooms, it's got a garage, and these are upscale, these are not the lower end. We do have some regular duplexes here. Uh, we've had them fifteen years, and I have been no problem with them. We are a good builder. Uh, we've built around here for a while. We think it actually, if you look at a picture, matter of fact, can you pull up a picture of that? Of the, the duplex we're gonna build? These are upscale. These are not square roofs. These is what they are. So, I mean, I can't see why it'd be an issue because it blends in with the neighborhood. If you look at the structure, it blends in. It doesn't have an odd effect, it doesn't have bad effect. It's like part of it. Roof lines are great, the building is great, and it'll help with the, uh, tax base, definitely help with the tax base. And again, we love trees, and what I didn't, uh, like is that some of those letters, I understand, that did not have addresses. There was, there was one group that all the letters came and they had one address on it. Which, it's ridiculous, but, I mean, it's like slander of these people. They just find their friends, whatever they can do, and, um, it's, it's wrong. These are, this is a great project. It'll actually benefit, uh, Rockport, it'll benefit the area, and it'll benefit the community. Especially the tax base. What I hear tonight, and having a good project here, it's, it's a positive. It's not a negative.
Would it be, would is there an option to still do single-family? Just keep it R-one zoning and, and not do the duplex? Is yours?
Well, the thing is, it's, it we do the duplexes because it's, it's a, it's a good project, it's, it's, it's more cost-efficient for us to do that. If we were to put town, or put regular house in there, you're probably looking at five hundred grand plus. I mean, the, the price around here has gone through the roof the past seven years. I've lived eight years. I know our house doubled. So we actually think it's a better project, and being that it's located near apartment complex, other duplexes. I mean, it, it'll be a benefit as far as looks and structure is, it's, it's, it'll be a positive for the whole community.
I'd like to ask a question. Is you fit in? I'll continue with part of Brad's question there, so. So, there is a possibility that you could do single families there, um, and it sounds like they'd be slightly higher and what have you. But it wouldn't preclude you from moving ahead with a project that would be profitable for you.
We would not do.
And that wouldn't require any zoning changes, which we have not done in that area for, uh, anything that wasn't grandfathered. But you could, that, you could move ahead with the project.
Not if it's single-family, no, sir. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be cost-effective.
Okay.
Other question?
I want to make it, sir, I have, like I said, I've talked to the twenty-nine people, majority of those people, their addresses are within that neighborhood. It's an old Rockport neighborhood, they all lived there for a long time, families, generations, it's a very prominent neighborhood. Um, and I just want to make sure, so, four-hundred thousand dollars is not affordable. I, and you can say it's affordable, Rockport, it's not affordable. Um, so, that's just, uh, it's just not affordable. And so, I just want to make sure that is very clear. If we want affordable housing, we need to make sure it's?
If you want affordable, you can go to Section Eight, you know?
Well, that's just, I'm just making sure that comment's put out there. Um, so, I'm going to have to, um, make a motion to deny this request based on those two facts.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions, Council? If not, we'll call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, if you can. Next item on the agenda, item number seven. Sir, approval of second final reading ordinance number nineteen forty-six, designating a geographic area located, hello, within the city of Rockport as a reinvestment zone for tax increment financing purposes pursuant to Chapter Three-Eleven of the Texas Tax Code to be known as Rockport Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One. Describing the boundaries of the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, creating a board of directors for such zone, providing a date for termination of the zone, containing findings and provisions related to the foregoing subject, and providing a severability clause establishing an effective date, providing for related matters. I have got a stack of cards here.
Mayor, Council, before you get started, I would like to point out that there's a corrected page two-seventy-six on your, on the dais. The column, two, three, four, the fifth and sixth columns had the same numbers in them. The totals were correct and does not change the substance of the, uh, financing plan or the project at all. It was just a copy-paste error. But, like I said, the sixteen million and the ten million totals are correct, so you have that on your, on the dais to replace page two-seventy-six with.
All right.
Um, outside of that, then, the, in second reading, the changes were made that were requested at the last meeting, and other than that, nothing else has changed.
Mr. Kane, I have a card from you. You have something different to say than what you said when you got up the first time and talked about the TERS thing? If you do, it's your turn.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, and I object to the rules of decorum, is, they wave the signs behind my head disrespectful? We want to start being disrespectful, then let's do it. But they continue waving signs behind me when I talk, and citizens be heard, that's rude. We have rules of decorum.
Okay. Let, let me say this, we don't allow placards and signs and posters and things at regular council meetings. So, I appreciate your having them and wanting to express yourselves. You can get up and talk and express yourselves if you want to, but we don't do signs. Thank you, if you put them down, I appreciate it. They're not behind you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew Kane, twenty-one oh six. Um, why, why has this become a big issue for me? When you hear about the government, weird things like TERS, tax increment, thirty-something million dollars? Why does it make mistrust of me? Because y'all don't tell the truth. I've got several instances, I'll tell you about it right now today. It's called, I've just learned a legal word from a lawyer today, it's called mistruth by omission, okay? In the budget, you said, "The tax increase will raise the approximate, uh, hundred thousand dollar home by twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents," which leads the average person in this room to think that it's a twenty-one-dollar tax rate. But no, you're only referencing the maintenance and operations side, not the interest in seeking. Why don't you tell the whole truth? It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-dollar tax increase, not a twenty-one-dollar. Pick the pieces that you like that, that look good. Other mistruths, Brad, you said today, Andrea, you said last time, you said, "Well, we've raised the, we've lowered the tax rate the last couple of years." You're misleading, it's called mistruth by omission. You're, what you're leading people to think is you've lowered the tax rate means you've lowered the taxes, it's a lie. You've raised the taxes fifty-two-point-two percent in the last two and a half years, be truthful. Another lie. Um, two percent, oh, we increased the budget two percent. My God, you've increased the taxes fifty-two-point-two, but you can find a section of the general fund that you've raised two percent, that, and y'all keep saying that. It's not flat, he corrected you, it's not a two-percent increase in the budget. You pick the pieces you want, you want us to trust you. That's fine, TERS, government, thirty-seven million, you, you don't speak whole truth, I don't trust you. My goal of this town meeting, my goal of this meeting is not to vote no tonight on TERS, but let's have a town hall. Citizens are very concerned about this. You don't have to respect me, I don't care. Respect the other people in this community. There's not an overwhelming success, I mean, overwhelming people supporting this, like you want to believe. Two days ago, less than two days ago, we started a poll on a group I have nothing to do with, just joined it. Eighty-two percent of the people in two days said vote no. There was two-hundred and thirty-five votes as of five o'clock today, in less than two days, a hundred and ninety-two voted no, forty-three said yes on the TERS. Eighty-two percent of people participating are saying no, there is not overwhelming support for this, slow it down. Four-hundred-and-eighty-five signatures? All we want is for y'all to listen to the people, you don't have to listen to me, listen to them. Social media blew up this weekend, hundreds of posts, thousands of comments. If you paid attention, it's a roaring rumble in this town over this, because they don't understand it. It involves tens of million dollars for twenty-five years. We have questions we want asked, can the Emerys perform? Who's backing the developer financially? What specific projects would a developer do on land that's not on this property? A lot of misconceptions. Ask to see a draft or, of the developer's agreement. It's a twenty-five-year deal, thirty years, this property has not developed, why? It's private property, the Bass family owns it, you can't develop some of this property you don't own.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Kathy Kane?
So, Kathy Kane, one oh nine Boardwalk, um, outside of the city. Um, I have the privilege of serving as a council member in a Dallas suburb. We looked at a TERS to help develop commercial property in this small town, and our concern was committing all increased tax revenue to just that small portion of the town. What would happen if we needed to redirect revenues for other areas and the general funds were depleted due to the TERS reinvestment funding requirements? We did have a bridge that collapsed and washed out during a flood, and if that TERS had been in, in place, we would not have been able to replace that bridge. That is what you're looking at. You're looking at putting funds and keeping them in a very small zone at the risk of the entire city. I don't live here, I live in the county, but I do have concern, and as a person that had your role many years ago, but still had that role, we could not justify it, because to set money aside for a very small portion of a community was a risk to the entire community. And so, I'm asking you to please look at this and do what, you know, my brother just said. Table this action at this point, there's no rush to do this. If you approve this today, or you approve it a year from now, put out better requirements. Don't just have a developer that's going through and giving the sales pitch to a very small group of people. Ask the question of the community at large, and go to places that they are. You've not yet done that. There are questions that need to be answered, and you've not yet taken the time to get those questions asked, and you haven't given them the opportunity to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Brad Gobel?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name's Brad Gabel. Spelled G-O-E-B-E-L, but pronounced it Gable. Um, I own property at eighteen sixty-nine Bay Shore. Um, I just wanted to speak in, in support of this TERS. Um, I don't know the Emerys, I just met them tonight, but, uh, been following along. Um, a, a, a few things, I'm, I'm just kind of breaking it down simply to, uh, look at the facts. A lot of misinformation out there. You know, city survives on taxes, obviously. Um, we're in, you know, deficit mode, y'all spoke about it earlier. This property is sitting over there, generating, what, maybe thirty thousand dollars in taxes? That being developed is going to help the city in the long run. It's not going to increase the public's taxes. The only people that it's going to increase is the people that are in the TERS, okay? And it seems to me that those people in that downtown area are in favor of this. Take a poll, look at those people that are there, and if they're in favor of it, that's, that's great. That's who you need to look at, because it'll increase their property values, which, in, in, in essence, will, they'll pay more taxes. So, that's, that's what it matters. I think it'll help the city, it'll help the people of Rockport. There's public places, that land is not accessible right now to the public. It's a beautiful piece of property. I've, I've admired it for years and years of coming here. I think develop the right way, and the plans that I've seen look to be where there's a lot of open space, the public can enjoy that property, and I think it's a huge benefit. So, I just wanted to speak in favor of it, I think it's a good thing. I don't think that land will ever be developed unless you pass a tax increment district as the one that's proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gable. Karen Mella?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Karen Mella. Um, I live at two oh seven Royal Oaks Drive. I'm an owner of multiple properties in the city of Rockport, and I'm in favor of the TERS for the downtown. I'm extremely proud of this community and our ability to persevere through incredible challenges. We all know what they are, Hurricane Harvey, the pandemic, the freeze, recent flooding. Our community has overcome so much in the last few years. We deserve this win for our community. Having the TERS in place, and if, and if I can get clarification, what we're voting on tonight is the TERS. Is that correct, Mayor?
That's right.
It says, we're not voting on any developer or the Emerys or anybody else. If, we're not voting on a development, we're only voting on the TERS tonight, is that correct?
Yes, that's right. We're going to establish, if it passes, a tax increment reinvestment zone.
Okay, because it sounds like there's a lot of getting the cart before the horse. So, I just wanted clarification that we're only voting on y'all, not me, but the council, the mayor, on the TERS. Having the TERS in place will create opportunity for development for our Harborfront and economic growth for our downtown and the business district without adding a tax burden to our taxpayers. And if you understand how a TERS works, that's key. You have it in your power to vote yes. I'm asking each of you to please give consideration to this and vote yes for the TERS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mella. If I read this and say, "Donnie Garcia," you're going to say it's Donna. If it's Donna, it, I'm sorry, it's Donna Garcia.
Thank you, guys. My name is Donnie Garcia, and I'm a proud property owner in the proposed TERS district. That's one thousand and one East Concho Street. Rockport has been a big part of my life over the last forty years. I've called it home since two thousand thirteen, and my wife and I, as my wife and I decided to move here for good. Since then, I've dedicated myself to investing in and supporting our local community. I've worked on projects like the reserve at St. Charles Bay, um, with my involvement with the McCombs Properties, and I'm one of the developer partners for Ocean Reef cottages and Coral Reef cottages. Both developments, all these developments have brought millions of dollars of tax revenue and contribute significantly to our local economy. Beyond development, I work with Spears and Co. I focus more on the commercial side of real estate while my wife excels on the residential front. We've seen firsthand how growth and development can benefit the area. That's what drives us to stay involved and contribute to Rockport's future. When we moved into town from Lamar directly after her, after Harvey, my wife and I purchased the Shop the World building and opened an event center, and we did that while all the other centers were being repaired and rebuilt. It's because we wanted to help the community. We also dove straight into community service. Uh, my wife joined the Chamber Board, she's actually the Chamber Chair. Um, she's also on the Humane Society Board, and I've got involved with the Rockport Cultural Arts District, where I currently serve as the Vice President for the last forty years. We've always believed in downtown Rockport is the heart of the community. It's ground zero, I've said it before, and I'll say it again. That's why we didn't just invest in it, we bought property downtown because we believe in its potential. I believe in it so much that I spent more money than I'd like to admit on a ride-along passenger train to bring joy and fun to families in the area. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, I'm the train guy. Um, but that goes beyond fun, it's all about creating spaces where families can connect and enjoy what Rockport, uh, and what makes Rockport so special. As a new grandfather, I've realized how much more we need family-friendly areas, public spaces, activities for all ages, and that everyone in Rockport can enjoy. But to make this a vision of reality, we need to support that the TERS can provide. I'm not just speaking as a developer, I'm, I'm a property owner in the TERS and someone who believes in creating a prosperous, welcoming future for Rockport and downtown area. Bottom line is, my wife, we don't have a platform, we don't post on Facebook, we put our money where our mouths are, we get involved. We went to every presentation on the TERS to understand and educate ourselves. We believe in the community and its potential, and supporting the TERS is about creating a brighter, more vibrant Rockport for families today and for junior generations to come.
Thank you. Thank you. Kevin Baker?
Good evening. I don't really like colors either.
But I wanted to address a, a couple of issues and really, um, summarize it in one issue. I don't want to get personal, and we shouldn't. But I'm the lawyer that Mr. Kane spoke with earlier. I'm not giving him legal, legal representation, I don't represent anyone here but myself. I own a building at four oh one South Austin. So, we're within the TERS. I couldn't spell TERS three days ago. I didn't know what a TERS was, other than I heard a brief meeting of, uh, I was at a meeting, briefly. Found it fascinating. But I kind of went on to doing the other things that life brought me. Until this weekend, when I saw commentary in the form of a petition, and I'm not going to talk about the wording of that petition, I'm glad that it hasn't been repeated here tonight. Quite frankly, I don't think it should. Mr. Kane mentioned something that I said to him earlier, but he misspoke. I didn't call it, as he says, a mistruth by omission. What I said was, "Mr. Kane, you are making misstatements by omission, because the conversation you're having in a public forum is leaving out critical facts. Critical facts that are causing the people of this community, community to misunderstand the entire underlying basis of what a TERS is. I fear that the four hundred and twenty-seven or so people who have signed on to that petition are actually the ones living in the echo chamber he's talking about. But I think there's hope beyond the misstatements, because there's the truth. And I believe the city council knows the truth. There's not been discussion today about what the backdrop is to the decision that you may, you may make, but I think the truth is there. Want to end it with this, Mr. Kane, do I have permission to re, repeat today the mantra you spoke to me about? the mantra you spoke to me about in three parts?
No, yes, not the important question.
That is correct. I also wrote the statements down and asked your permission. No?
You would have to report it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gable. Scott Hein.
I'm Scott Hein, nineteen oh one FM thirty thirty-six, Rockport resident. And for the record, I'm an accountant. My dad's an accounting professor. I grew up with it. We can argue on different sides of this. My desire, as poorly as I've addressed it, is always to try and help the people you ignore: the silent majority, the sixty percent who have children on free and reduced lunches, the ones whose landlords have no choice but to pass tax increases through in their rent, the ones I see putting back trays of meat on the grocery store, the senior citizens living on fixed incomes, the ones who won't be able to afford to shop at your new stores or spend nights in the boutique hotel that the Nav District plans to build. In short, the constituents that you don't invite to come down to speak at these meetings and who you know don't vote in great numbers. You've assured them and yourselves that you've stumbled across a magical plan where millions of dollars appear and nobody has to pay for it. When the vote's taken tonight and the celebration ensues, and it will, they'll never be further from your hearts and they'll never be closer to mine. You and past city councils had the ability to tell the Bass family to clean up their contaminated property or face the threat of condemnation. And I'll freelance for a moment and say that I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Gable. This isn't necessary tonight, but on the other hand, uh, an attorney friend explained that the eight-foot chain-link fence and the three-strand barbed wire is like a neon sign that says the land is contaminated. There've been numerous attempts to develop this property, and they all failed for the same reason. The Basses didn't want to spend any of their billions of dollars to clean up their own property or to build the required infrastructure. Under those preconditions, the numbers to develop it could never have worked. Instead, the land sat for thirty-five years and continued to deteriorate so that even more public funds are required now to rehabilitate it. And please don't any of you dare to say, like you like to do, that I don't know what I'm talking about. My wife, sitting behind me, personally gathered millions of private donations for the art center and dealt more extensively with those prior developers than any of you. Now, I apologize to those who expected me to say more or better this evening. Perhaps you can take some small solace in knowing that it was decided long before we got to this point. In a very real sense, the same battle is fought all across the world and all through history, and only the details change. We're taught that the meat shall inherit the earth, but only after the politicians and merchants have had their fill. And so, in a very real sense, we both win, just on a different timeline. I lost sight of that for a while. I'm content with my own inheritance and the schedule for it. May each of you get what you crave so that you won't find yourself waiting for it done. No many of you are convinced that good intentions justify...
Just ran out. Thank you, sir. Mark Hagan.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me. My name is Mark Hagan. I live at six oh four Silverado Street here in Rockport. I had a big old long thing here to read with, uh, with my three minutes. And, uh, I stood back there and I listened to what other folks had to say about different things that go on here. I also don't like to get personal. I do get fired up thoughts, you know? There's some serious mistrust in this community. I, I don't know if anybody really realizes it, but, uh, but there is. Some of that's not your fault. Some of it's your predecessor's fault. You know, we had, uh, city managers and city council people and mayors tell us a few years ago that, uh, we're either either weak of mind or malice of heart. I take that kind of personally. I'm a thirty-year Air Force veteran. I'm anything but weak of mind or malice of heart. And there's some rumblings of that still going on with this group of folks. And I'm not going to get into it. Couple of things struck me. A gentleman here talked about investing in Rockport. Did you get any support from the city? Did you get any kickback from, any money from the city? Nope. Did it on your own, right? Just like it's supposed to be done. Did you invest?
Oh, sure.
And did you, well, nevermind. I'm not gonna, I'm starting to get fired up. He did it on his own. Well, with his own money. He didn't use my money. He didn't use your money. The other gentleman with the presentation, he wasn't asking for money. He was asking for a change. And one of the things that jumped out at me, Andrea said she was taken aback because twenty-nine people opposed his project. Taken aback because twenty-nine people opposed. We have over four hundred people right now who are opposing this project. That ought to take you aback. I came in here to say I disapprove. I think you ought to say no to it. I kind of changed my mind. I think we need to know more, and I apologize for coming late to the game. But we need to know more about what this is. Maybe it's a good thing, maybe it's not. There's one thing I do want to give you all, though. I'm not just a blind follower of people on Facebook. Yeah, I get out there and I do my spiel, and I do things that I probably should sit back and think about before I do it. But I'll take responsibility for it. But I also do a little bit of digging. And there's a case that just closed out in Austin about a TERS that the city council voted for. They were sued. And the judge, I don't want to get the wording wrong because I'm not very good at this stuff. The district judge issued a summary judgment of final order to the plaintiffs. In other words, you're not going to do the TERS there because it's not legal. And I think we have something very similar going on here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Mr. Jimenez. Mrs. Jimenez? I can't read the first name here, but come, come right ahead.
Hello, my name is Miracle Jimenez. Um, Mary Dero. I represent, um, I think maybe children and the homeschool community and, um, uh, we also have a small business. But, uh, I think I, I'm kind of on both sides, but I'm also on the, on the side of, uh, uh, if you could wait, because I'm just learning about it too. If you could wait to make a decision on the TIRZ. And, um, so I believe that it, it's more important to have a community-led planning for the city of Rockport. I'm also not part of it either. I'm in the county. But this is affecting me too because I'm seeing all of my, I've made friends with so many business owners, and they're, they're kind of on the same spot where, you know, they're not getting a lot of business locally on the local side, um, you know, because they're all suffering in the same way. But anyway, I believe it's like, uh, our, our taxes are going up, wages are staying the same. We can't even afford to hire anyone at our shop, in our county shop. Um, but I, I think the TIRZ is going to be like a siphoning of a taxpayer pool for prime waterfront developer rights. So us paying them for the privilege to have them profit in a really, 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 really good spot, really good area. And I, I believe that this strips the culture and identity of Rockport. Um, I'm going to skip that. I, I think it's, I'm not going to do it. I'm not brave enough. But anyway, I think that the, obviously Harvey ruined this area. It razed the area. And I think it's kind of quick to do this big project where there's, um, there's some pushback, you know? Where it, it's kind of like a credit card bailout or like a, um, payday loan. In a sense, where the economy here is still correcting, we need to be a little bit slow about it. So it's the opportunity to rebuild, but we're also vulnerable to predation. But I'm, I can't say much because I'm kind of new to the area too because I, I've met so many generational Rockportians, and they, they kind of say the same thing, and I love them so much. Y'all, y'all know who they are. And they, they say that they love, "Oh, no, I've got thirty seconds left." Okay, anyway, so I, I actually have an alternative. I have an alternative. Um, if we could talk about it, and I don't think I have any time, but this, this is actually a town called Leavenworth, Washington. If I could approach the bench...
If you will give those to the city secretary, she'll see that we get them.
This is a, this is a town called Leavenworth. It's a similar town, similar situation.
Thank you, Mrs. Jimenez. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Bonnie Carlisle.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight and for, uh, all of your time and consideration. My name's Bonnie Carlisle. I live at fifty-one oh five Highway thirty-five. I own a building located at four oh six South Austin Street and, uh, the property behind it. Uh, I also have some additional property in the downtown area. Um, I've heard a lot about this project, uh, not just the project, but the TERS in general. And as an owner downtown, I just have to share that I did not go into my investments lightly, um, by any means. And as we were looking at relocating here from the Austin area, I knew that we were having some life changes and we, uh, were making investments into new businesses. And I wanted to make sure that the investments that I were making were prudent. So I did a lot of due diligence. I asked a lot of questions. I met with a lot of different people. And, uh, pretty much the overall consensus was downtown was really evolving, uh, that there were a lot of exciting improvements that would be happening. Uh, the area behind us, I, I met with the navigation district. I met with various ones in the real estate industry. Everyone was very optimistic that downtown had a very bright future. Uh, that was five years ago. And, uh, looking at where we are today versus really where I thought we would probably be at this point, we, and I realize that economies and unforeseen circumstances, but we really haven't quite hit the mark. And I do not think that that is an issue that is, um, uh, anyone's fault necessarily on the city side. Um, but what I do know is that there are a lot of improvements that need to be made to really make us a vibrant downtown. Um, as we all know, we've got drainage issues. We have road issues. Uh, we have parking issues. We have a variety of different problems that quite frankly detract from the experience that people have when they come downtown, whether that be residents or whether that be tourists. And quite frankly, I want them all to come downtown. I want all of our businesses to be successful. I want all of us to be very proud of our downtown district. We've put so much time and effort into it, um, both as a city and personally. And I see it every day. Uh, we have really tried very hard to make our business be family-friendly. We encourage families to come and visit the Coastal Mercantile and the four oh six Wine Bar. Uh, we've been very proud of what we've been able to do there. But I know that the city is not in a position to make these improvements on their own without some kind of intervention. I feel that the TERS is the best way for us to get a lot of these needed public improvement areas accomplished. And I feel very strongly that if we do not have something or some kind of a catalyst that changes this, such as the TERS, that it's not going to happen in the near future. And that will be to the detriment of this town, in my opinion. So thank you for your time.
Jack Wright.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Jack Wright. Last time I stood up here, I didn't tell you anything about me because I figured you knew me. Four eighteen Cherry Hills. I want to say the first part of this. I heard two people speak tonight that concern me because they are my age. I will turn seventy next week. My taxes are capped. Theirs should be, and if they're not, I have a concern as to why they would be saying taxes go up. Mine have gone down every year since I turned sixty-five. So those two people, one of which has already left, need to be talked to about why they think their taxes are going up, period. So, that being said, I want to tell you what I think of the TERS. There are four hundred and sixty TERSs active, completed, developed in the state of Texas. There are two hundred and fifty-four counties in the state of Texas. That's an average of one point eight per county, and we know there are many that don't have any, like here. So the numbers speak very good about a project that would allow the city to do things that there is no other way to do, just from a cost standpoint. You can't raise taxes or take money from the bank that doesn't have the account balance in it to pay for it and do that kind of development. You have before you the most wonderful opportunity to make something happen that couldn't happen any other way. And I guess I would summarize it. I'm going to sound a little like a credit card commercial, and that is, this is the easiest decision in the history of decisions. Thank you all.
David Reed.
So, good evening, Council, Mayor. A lot of you know me. My name's David Reed, one oh five Forest Hills. Uh, those that know me very well know I really don't like to get up here and talk in public, but I'm here. I, I have a personal interest in this. Uh, I do own property. My wife and I own property downtown at five oh four Austin Street. She owns a business downtown. And, uh, so anything that's going on there, we do, you know, take an interest in. And I've listened to the presentations and read about what a TERS is, and I think I have a decent understanding, probably not a good understanding, but uh, one of the things that, that has jumped out at me is people are concerned what kind of, what this would do to the drainage downtown. And as the county engineer, drainage is something that really makes my ears perk up. And, uh, I wanted to kind of address that. You know, there has historically been flooding downtown. And, and we have drainage issues coming from two different ways. The water coming in from, uh, tidal surge, the runoff coming out from normal rains, and then, of course, we have big rains. And I think this development probably does a lot to help that tidal surge. Right now, that property is pretty low, and, uh, we do have tidal surges that come in and push the, the bay into the downtown area, inundating the roads and flooding the buildings, you know? Tropical Storm Alberto is a good example of what can happen down there. As far as the, the drainage runoff, you know, there is a drainage system in the ground. You know, I think there's a thirty-inch pipe, probably no bread. I don't know if it's adequate or not, given that it was designed twenty-four years ago. It may be a little undersized. I don't know. But the county is going to do a, a new drainage study of the whole county, and that area being one of it. And that's certainly something that, that we'll look into. And if, if we do see that there's inadequacies, you know, we can recommend, uh, upgrading improvements and have that put in as part of the TERS, TERS. The bulkhead has got to be a great thing. I support the TERS, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Noel Byrne.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Noel Byrne. I have, uh, I live at twenty-six oh one Bay House Drive here in Rockport. I have, I live at twenty-six oh one Bay House Drive here in Rockport. I've been visiting Rockport for forty years, owned property here for nineteen, and been a full-time resident since November of twenty of nineteen, I should say. My professional background is, I have a, I worked in banking for forty-five years, the last seventeen of which I headed up the Public Finance Division for Frost Bank. And in that capacity, I had the opportunity to work with numerous TERS zones throughout the state of Texas. And I've seen firsthand how they can be a catalyst for great development within a community, assuming that they are very focused on and properly managed. So I'm here to support this TERS. I think it's an important opportunity for us to take as a community. I don't think that the the public has gotten adequate information or correct information on this. And I think if they truly understood that this is not increasing anybody's taxes, that the number of people that had signed the petition would be a lot less. So I'm very much in favor of of the TERS, and I stand ready to be of assistance any way I can, and I encourage your support.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. John Jackson.
I'm John Jackson, three twelve Olympic Drive, Mayor and City Council. First, let me say this. Tonight's vote is not about the Embry's proposed harbor front development, but many have turned it into that, and have even gotten personal and have stooped to new lows. Tonight is only about establishing a TERS which will provide much-needed infrastructure for the downtown area and the harbor front area is just a catalyst to make it happen. And it will transform Rockport and all of Aransas County. It will be game-changing for not only the downtown area, but also the extra revenues being made available for other parts of the city's general fund. Also, a significant rise in sales taxes, which now makes up about twenty-five percent of the general revenue for the for the city. And then you've got hot taxes because of enhanced tourism and commercial activity. A TERS is a very effective economic tool, which will have the effect of providing more commercial-based revenue as opposed to our local residential property owners carrying a vast majority of the local tax bases. And if the harbor front development does not succeed, and it never happens as proposed, I can pretty much guarantee you that the next developer who comes along will likely not have the same genuine caring attitude toward Rockport. The Embry's have a history here that goes back generations, and they are local taxpaying citizens. Their plans are to give back to the public access to the downtown waterfront that has been private for over one hundred years. They plan a two-acre park in the middle of the development, a boardwalk around the entire waterfront, and their plans include family activities, music and art, and a quality of life enhancement in so many ways. Of course, it will also include street skates, splash pads, drainage, and all of this with low-density residential. The next developer who comes along will probably not have that attitude. And they'll most likely be high-density residential, like so many developments on the Texas coast and beyond. So yes, tonight is solely about whether or not to establish TERS. My firm belief is that none of this can or will happen without a TERS. So what I'm saying is that we might never have another developer who has a true interest in Rockport like the current proposal has. So I say, don't look a gift horse in the mouth. Because I'm betting the next one who comes along will be much more profit-oriented rather than being a good and truly caring citizen. And I strongly believe that attitude is why the Bass family has chosen them, because as many in our community already know, the Bass family has quite, been quite generous for decades in this community in so many years.
Follow it in.
Mayor, City Council members. I want to address the several statements on the opposition's petition that are not factual. While I am not going to repeat them here, you are aware of many inaccuracies that have been expressed. Vanessa, the mayor and city council, have hosted six public information sessions and workshops to educate the public on how a TERS works. The city has been learning about this for two and a half years. Those opposing it have had many opportunities to educate themselves about a TERS and the constraints written into the law. Their statements lack integrity and are a weak way to garner support for an opposing campaign. I am disappointed that those opposing the TERS have chosen to use inaccuracies and fear-mongering to make their claims. I suggest that they reference the Comptroller website to understand how this TERS works before posting any more claims about the TERS. In the last week, I have had over a dozen people I didn't even know before calling me, emailing me, Facebook messaging me, and even texting me documentation of screenshots and videos of the misleading and false information about the TERS that has been spread around in both the public and private online forums. I appreciated being kept in the loop, and I want you to know that we have an amazing community that is watching out for itself. Besides the fact that today's TERS is not about us or our development, I want to address any concerns about us for any members of this community who have been misguided by these statements. The city is not giving us or any other developers any money. It is not raising anyone's taxes. No one is burdened to pay for the infrastructure except us. No one is burdened to pay for the improvements that create the reimbursements for that infrastructure except us. It pays for itself, and the new infrastructure will be conveyed to the city before we or any developers within the zone will receive any reimbursements off of the, our own created value. Council members, stay strong and continue your commitment to doing what's best for our community. Please vote yes for the TERS today. We have had enough time, we have all the information we need, so let's move forward towards a brighter future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have got a spreadsheet here that lists thirty-four people who support the TERS, and some of these have asked that their letters that they wrote be read because they couldn't be here tonight. And I have got one that asked me to read it, this is from John Heffron. Public taxpayer dollars should not fund private development. Taxpayers living outside TERS should have a higher tax burden. This is what he says. Council should reject the anti-TERS position. This non-binding petition is laced with flawed and charred language that might trigger many taxpayer residents to sign it. To wit, public taxpayer dollars should not be funding private development. Taxpayers living outside the TERS would have higher tax burden. Hard-earned money will enrich private developers rather than support public services that enhance their lives. Aransas County is not a ticket for private providers, developers, to profit from our tax dollars. Public money should fund our public needs, not private pockets. Petitions underlying premises are misleading or reflect a basic misunderstanding of a TERS. Under TERS, the developer does not pocket one penny of taxpayer money. The developer fronts the money infrastructure costs and is reimbursed only after the infrastructure has been put in place and in compliance with development agreement with the city. Developer receives no profit for or markup on the construction of the public infrastructure. Because the public infrastructure and subsequent development, the tax value of the property increases. A portion of the increased increment taxes repays the developer for fronting the infrastructure cost, and the taxing entities pocket the difference. In other words, more tax dollars become available for public needs, services, and not less. Taxpayers who live outside the TERS boundaries do not see any increase in their tax burden. If anything, they see a reduction. The TERS is a no-lose situation for the city and taxpayers. If the developer fails or does not complete the public infrastructure per city requirements, it will not be reimbursed. If the development is successful, the public infrastructure is paid for with a portion of the incremental increased property taxes on the property and the remaining increased tax revenues benefit. The city and taxpayers, the council, should reject the petition to approve the TERS. Matt.
I've got a letter here that I was asked to read. It's from, is it Bill Boker? I hope I'm pronouncing it. Becker? Rockport Harbor Front. Dear Mayor, City Council Members, I am writing to express sincere support for the TERS initiative, as well as share a strong endorsement of the developer heading the proposed harbor front project. As CEO, President of Fine Line Diversified Realty, a division of Bass Companies who own Harborfront LP, we have spent many hours working with Doak and Scarlett Embry in reviewing the carefully planned proposed development. We find they are both qualified and deeply committed to the Rockport community's long-term success. Their vision for the harbor front, along with their expertise in handling the complexities of this development process, has earned them and positions them as an excellent Rockport partner in this challenging undertaking. They have demonstrated deep respect for Rockport's heritage and determination to help bring the harbor and adjacent downtown area to a renewed life. The Bass family has and continues to wish much success for Rockport. Over many generations, efforts have been extended in hurricane recovery, arts, environment, and other community endeavors. We believe that Scarlett and Doak are worthy of our continued support. Previous efforts to develop this property have been unsuccessful due to environmental challenges and the massive infrastructure needs. Scarlett and Doak have shown steadfastness, integrity, and commitment to truly understand and respect the challenges of this property and how to achieve, how to achieve a development that benefits the public, while still achieving economic sustainability. Both their team, as well as ours, understand that this project, or any development project on this property, cannot feasibly move forward without the combined private and public partnership afforded by such means as a TERS. The TERS allows for reimbursement of the necessary infrastructure without burdening taxpayers. This ensures the streets, drainage, bulkhead, and public boardwalk as envisioned in the Heritage District overlay. Scarlett and Doak's plan also includes amenities such as a park, a pavilion, and playscapes for families to enjoy. These improvements will open the harbor front for the public, making it accessible and enjoyable for residents and visitors alike. A TERS can also help ensure the downtown and harbor areas' future is shaped thoughtfully, allowing Rockport to grow economically and culturally, all while preserving its unique character. I strongly encourage the mayor and city council to vote in favor of the TERS. I also encourage the Rockport community to join Scarlett and Doak in this important endeavor for the future of Rockport. They represent a devoted and competent development team that is willing to make the necessary investment to build infrastructure for your city.
Stephen Levy.
Mayor, Council staff, thank you. My name is Stephen Levy, I live at nineteen Curlew. I was born and raised in Rockport. I love this community. I live here, I give here, I do business here, I recreate here. I love this community so much that in both of my offices hangs a custom painting that we had commissioned of the downtown area that this TERS is being affected by. One of them's nine feet by eleven feet. I love this community so much that almost three decades ago, my graduate school thesis project was on this very TERS. Rockport needs this TERS. I appreciate your due diligence, the open forum tonight, and I believe passing this TERS will help cultivate proper growth that's sustainable, affordable, beautiful, and accessible to all, that will all benefit from. I'm in full support of this TERS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. I have a note from Brody Miller. And ask it his be read. It says, "As a Rockport resident taxpayer and small business owner, I respectfully request that my city councilman make a a motion to table this particular item to provide more time to educate taxpayers of the subject that is one of the opinions available."
Phil Salome, nineteen thirteen Crescent, Rockport. I wish I was writing to congratulate everyone on landing the Navida chip plant here in Aransas County, but that is not the case. Sadly, whether it is location, proximity, politics, or some unknown force that we have not been attracted to industry that creates higher-paying jobs, our community has to scratch their head a little harder, dig a little deeper, and be willing to entertain creative ideas to attract healthy development. Let me give warning to those who are deciding on this proposal first. The nattering the bobs of negatism I refer to as a consortium of K, R, H, and Co. are the trumpets of no. They remind me of Churchill's thoughts on socialism, that it is a philosophy of failure, the creed of ignorance, and the gospel of envy. Its only inherent virtue is the equal sharing of misery. These people prosper on fear-mongering and would have our community frozen in time. They are a Shakespearean tragedy akin to King Lear. It is imperative that they be heard but ignored. Communities are growing or dying, there is no middle ground. This proposal utilizes a tested means of public-private financing that is the only way to make such projects economically feasible. It puts no burden on the taxpayer, and the only possible outcome is a wider tax base benefiting all in the community. The plans for the area are truly awe-inspiring, with my only fear being the magnitude of the project. However, that can be said of many things in the past, and we have to look no further than our own state where the seventh wonder of the world, seventh wonder of the modern world, the Astrodome was built. That too had naysayers that have been forever silenced. I believe, I believe this project will succeed and be a catalyst for more great things to come. The catalyst we need to ultimately land higher-paying jobs that will reduce the number of children living in poverty luckily. This should be our primary goal. Let me be clear that I support this project and here's financing proposal one hundred percent, and ask you to vote for the project.
Council? The agenda item is to approve on second final reading ordinance number nineteen forty-six. Questions, comments?
Was there any opposition letters that were sent in?
No, they're written up.
That was zero?
Sign up.
Come right on in.
With the way it's gone tonight, I wasn't going to speak.
I saw you leave and moved your.
Jeff Sosin, president of the Aransas County Partnership, I live at twenty-four hundred FM twenty-one sixty-five. Yes, I live in one of those other projects, Pearl Point, and my wife and I are enjoying it immensely. I just had to come up and talk, because I'm kind of psyched right now. First, you guys, with your volunteer position, you have put a tremendous amount of time and energy over the last four or five months, not only looking at the TERS, but thinking about the financial condition of this city and the path forward that the status quo will not take you out of. And I think you should be thanked for that. Personally, I apologize. Opposition, TERSs are, they're controversial everywhere. But the personal attacks, the things that are said, there's no place for that. Let's have real conversations. I was blessed in my time in Galveston to facilitate over a hundred million dollars in business recovery resources. I was involved in four tax increment reinvestment zones. Prior to Galveston, I coordinated most of the federal and state economic development finance programs. I got a little bit of background in doing these types of things. Thank you, city manager staff. Amazing. I'm excited about what Vanessa is attempting to do, and I hope that we have the fortitude to continue moving forward. Nothing's perfect, it's never going to be right a hundred percent of the time. Sometimes we have to be willing to fail if we are truly going to succeed. The thing that really made me stand up tonight was Mr. Hagan. I hope I got his name right. I hope I got his name right. He has some legitimate concerns. As I said, these things have a lot of detail behind it. We're in step one of at least a four-step process. Your consideration to create the mechanism for you to consider a TERS with development agreements down the road. Then we've got at least two other taxing entities and probably only two through the Navigation District in Aransas County that will have to go through the same consideration. Only after that will you then be in a position to even entertain potential development agreements from developers that can comply with the rules of engagement that you are setting out in creating this, this financing mechanism. So I'm excited to be able to talk to people like Mr. Hagan. I've tried reaching out to some of the others. They don't want to talk to me. I've got the big Scarlett letter because I'm the EDC. I've been here two years. I'm excited to be in Rockport. I'm excited about the future potential that we have, and I want to thank all of you for your time and energy because I think we have some opportunities that we can drive forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we were saying, questions, comments?
Can I make one, one correction to Mr. Sosson? We are duly compensated, I think a hundred dollars a month. So it's not, not totally volunteer.
Questions, comments? This is second reading.
I have a question. Oh, actually, I have several. She already knows I have. Is there needed to be a correction on section five where it says the base year for the TRRC as being January first, twenty twenty-five?
So that's correct.
That is correct.
If we go for it this year, our base year will be twenty twenty-five. It goes with the tax year. Your taxes are due January twenty twenty.
Okay, so next year would be the base year, which means nothing could even be pooled, resourced out until twenty twenty-six if there was anything gained even at that period of time.
Yes, there will be no growth in twenty twenty-five, so nothing can be paid out.
So we're looking at several years forward on these plans. Okay. And then I was reviewing table three, and I just want to be, look at this in a very realistic way. In the table, it outlines the taxable value increases, and then you'll see this between now and twenty thirty-one, it's showing an approximate two hundred and seventy million dollars of additional values created with these huge jumps on twenty-eight, thirty, and thirty-one. Okay? That's probably like near eighty-two percent of all of Rockport's current commercial inventory, but just in those eleven buildings.
Yes.
Is that realistic? Are these numbers truly realistic?
The numbers before you are incredibly conservative, giving, given that a project is approved. The revenue forecast. Yeah, I thought it might say on there, but it does, it does assume a project. No project, no, no value increase other than the natural value.
So this has been built around a developer's proposal then?
It has not been built around a specific proposal.
Hypothetical proposal.
Yes, absolutely.
That's what I wanted to make clear. One huge concern I have, I am in support of downtown at a hundred percent, but I do want to hear everyone's concerns within my ward, but I really, really have a lot of concern about how this could negatively affect downtown as well. We're looking at adding a lot of potential development down there. It's going to increase that competitive sector. So how do we move forward with ensuring that we are not going to be harming the rest of the city's existing businesses and the businesses down within that zone? It also, based on this preliminary table, it shows that the property values downtown are going to increase ten times in the next six years. Is that realistic and viable for the businesses that are downtown to be able to have affordability? That's something we have to ask ourselves.
So are you asking me, is that realistic?
Yeah, I mean, are we going to include this moving forward? That there's priority for protection of what exists, not just for what can we create?
Well, I think the premise is that you generate more traffic downtown. With the TERS, you should get improved roads that would accommodate the traffic better, and then you have traffic better, traffic more manageable, and yes, your values are going to go up, but your usership should go up as well. Your, your customer base should go up as well. And then that in turn puts more money into the sales tax, which keeps your property tax low.
Hypothetically.
Or offsets. I'm sorry?
Hypothetically.
One hundred percent. It's all hypothetical. No project comes in? It, it doesn't happen.
And then another thing is, I know during the presentation, it was stated, this is really dependent, just as Jeff said, on the participation of the city, the navigation, and the county. If the county chooses not to participate, I'm going off the assumption Navigation District is willing and ready, just because it is, involves part of their area. If the county chooses not to participate, is this even viable? Or is it dead at that point?
No, it's always viable, even if just the city participates. The.
What would be required?
What would be required of what?
Of the city to be able to afford to do this just based on this. Would we need to assume debt and take debt out for those developments?
No. Well, for this development?
Any development hypothetically.
The, any development cannot draw more than the TERS creates. So if the TERS creates five million, the developer can't get back six. If the TERS board and the city council choose to take debt against the TERS, they can. But that's, that's a board decision.
Okay. So that's something that the board would propose to council, and council would still have to approve any debt that would be issued.
Right. And there's a table in here. I'm not sure exactly what page. It shows what, what each entity could, could generate. And so even if the city is the only entity participating, basically, it would guarantee that those funds go to improve downtown or do some sort of improvements in that, in that district, even if it's just the city. If the other ones, you know, if the other entities participate, of course, the, the dollar goes farther, but if they choose not to, we, we still have a mechanism to improve our front porch.
Independently, our, well, like conjunctional.
On our own.
Yeah. Okay. And then I kind of just have a couple less questions for you. Sorry, but just a couple of statements. Yeah, I talked about my concerns. I've listened to a lot of people's, whether it be for, against, and I hear a common theme, and it's just not enough information, not enough public information has been put out there. I know we have presented several times, whether it be, you know, we had a special workshop, whether it was made publicly aware that the TERS was going to be presented. It was placed within the agenda and posted. Is that going to encourage a lot of actual public? Go ahead.
Can I go through what we've done?
Sure.
We started this conversation in February of twenty twenty-two. We had a public meeting in March of twenty twenty-three, April twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, July twenty-third, August ninth, August thirteenth, August twenty-seventh. It was in the paper three times. It's been in the newspaper three, three times. It's been on the, on Facebook, and it's been on our website, and I know the financing plan has been on the website for over a month. So that's just, that's what we have done. I don't, you know.
Have to ask ourselves, is it enough? Right?
You certainly can, yes.
I mean, we've done, we had years. How long was the, the short-term rental ordinance sat there and worked on and worked on and worked on? A lot of time was put into this, a lot of reconsideration was put into this. We just, and I have to ask ourselves, is this, what is our deadline to establish this for the start of next year as our base year? What is our deadline right now to have that, for this to be passed if we choose to do so? Where we can allot more time if we choose to have that consideration?
So you're asking us the council?
I'm asking them the deadline.
So it would have to be ninety days. Bob may know better than, ninety days before twenty twenty-five. So we're before January first. So we're closed.
Yeah. So I mean, that's my, that was one of my big questions, is do we even have any more time to put that in additional information, another workshop where the public can feel they have an opportunity for input, feedback, questions? I do, that was one of the things we talked about, council, transparency, and that community and public involvement. We have to ask ourselves sometimes, have we done enough to support all sides? We know what we want to do and the best decision we want to make, but we just have to ask ourselves. That's what I'm struggling with tonight.
So I'm going to respond to that, Stephanie. I appreciate where you're coming from, but again, the list of things that she's already listed off, we have, I believe, done our due diligence. We cannot make people come up and participate if they're not willing to. If we're putting it out there on multiple meetings, they're all open to the public. Anyone can come. Putting it on Facebook, it's on our website. We've had any time people can come to us, even as council, to discuss what is happening here. They have to take responsibility at some point to actually go on and actually get that information. And what's happening now and what I'm seeing, it's a lot of misinformation because what tonight's vote is, it's not the development. It's literally to make a zone and to make a TERS board.
Yeah.
So now we make the zone, and we have so many more steps, and every single meeting we have after that, anyone is welcome now that they're where now. They can come to the development meetings, they can come and see and ask questions. They're going to have plenty of opportunities from now to see what is brought to the table for this actual TERS as soon as we make the zone. So do I think that we've done our due diligence? I believe we did above and beyond our due diligence.
Yeah, I know. I went out of my way to ensure it meeting downtown. I think in retrospect, though, looking back, I would have preferred it to be done differently, where we would have talked, discussed, and educated on the TERS zone alone without the developers at all being connected to that. Because I think that was the confusion with a lot of people, where they connected the two from the start. If we could have produced the information a little bit differently, so next time maybe we can do this differently. Or as we develop within this TERS, we can be more aware of putting that information out there where it can be more received, because I think a lot of the problem does exist where they are attaching those two entities together. It's the horse in the cart role, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you. The, one of the things I want to make clear, and I'm the newest on council up here, for those of you that come out tonight and commented, I want to say thank you to help me get up to speed as the newest council member, but I want to make sure Vanessa, tonight's, if they, if we choose to move ahead and designate this TERS, that's just the beginning. Then there'll be many more public meetings and what have you with the committee.
So after this, you'll have to establish a committee.
Yes, and there'll be.
And then the committee can, can lay fallow until someone shows up with the development agreement. Or the city goes and says, it's not going to generate any money for the first year.
Sure.
There's no action.
But the, when, when, again, if this moves ahead and we set the committee up, there's, there's many opportunities there as they start getting into the meat and potatoes of how the TERS committee is going to operate and what have you. These, these folks will have more, many more opportunities to, to get involved in really what the TERS is going to do at that point. We're just, we could establish it tonight. I just want to make sure these folks understand.
Need for public opinion and input?
Sure.
Participation.
Yes.
You know, the big, and this is my opinion, but with the tie of the development and the TERS, which you're absolutely correct, we've tried to keep the two separate, the, the opportunity for input will come when someone shows up with a development agreement. And then you're going to have, you citizen will have input on obviously the development agreement, and that's where the meat and potatoes is. The TERS is, the TERS is a, an empty vessel. You got to put something in it.
Well, that's really what I wanted to, to make everybody here aware of. If somebody isn't, if there are some folks that are new, new to this conversation, this is just the beginning, that we are going, possibly going to designate this as own. Then the work begins. Then the communication starts on if a developer even brings a project to the TERS committee and what have you. This is just the beginnings of, okay, we're going to allow something like this. Then the work starts. So the opportunity to participate as, as members of the community in this TERS and what have you, you're going to have a lot of opportunities should this move ahead. I just want to make that clear, that this is the very first step, and there is a lot of meetings to come should this go ahead.
Real quick, Vanessa, can you explain a little bit how the committee is going to be founded?
Yes.
Just for the public to hear how we're going to keep that committee consistent.
I'm going to find it in the ordinance.
Could we potentially put out some public information regarding this from like after next steps moving forward, what they would entail, so that we are producing that, that information?
Of course, yeah.
I think putting together something that's brief, explains the process, explains the next steps, so people can also be prepared to be involved if they choose so to participate.
Of course we can.
Or apply to the board.
Okay, so I think the only thing that, the board members, to your terms.
It's a seven-member board.
Seven members. And you have to be a voter, registered voter.
You have to be eighteen, a resident of Aransas County or adjacent county and own or, or real property with it.
So anyone can apply for it?
It's pretty broad.
And you're going to put an application out? So people can apply?
It'll be like all of our other applications, and you'll check TERS board.
And that'll be on our website, and are we going to put that on Facebook so people are allowed to join? So if people out there are really concerned about the development agreements that come in play, or if you really are, you know, have thoughts and you really want to have an input, apply. Come be part of the board. You know, be part of it and help out and see what you can do to make a difference that way. I think, I just wanted to make sure people understood that this is open to the public, this board is going to be the public, and we're going to have applications, and it's got to be a resident on property.
Any other questions?
Just, just a statement, Mayor, if I may. We've had a lot of support and, and a lot of opposition to, to the tiers that's been presented recently, but I think a very important part of this is, is the, the boundaries of the tiers, of the tiers, you know, downtown area has overwhelming support of, of property owners and business owners in that area, and those are the ones that are going to be most directly affected by, by this. You know, if there is an increase, incremental, incremental increase in taxes, they're the ones that are going to feel it. It's not going to be me that lives outside of the tiers. I may have a property, a property tax increase just because that's the way life goes, but I won't have, I won't feel it like I live, like I'm in the tiers. They're the ones that are going to feel it, and, and they have overwhelmingly supported this mechanism. So to me, I just, I, I support them, even though it's not my ward, but I support them and, and their wishes.
Mayor and council?
Any other questions?
Mayor, I just, I do want to make one clarification. Since the last reading to today, I did become aware of a Phase Two Environmental Assessment Report that has been attached, and findings have been made with respect to that. It's, it's a revision from the first reading.
It's in the packet. It's in, it's the one in the packet, but I said those are the only changes that have been made, but as, as Councilwoman Rangel said, we can continue to, to push out education materials, and we're available.
Any other questions?
The caption get read.
I make the most interesting, I don't know.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? We call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. We're taking a ten-minute break. We'll be back in here at eight forty-eight.
Thank you for the break.
I was going to-
Doing this for nearly two hours.
All right, we are going back in session. It is eight fifty-one. Next item on the agenda. Item number eight, consider approval on second reading, final readings of ordinance nineteen forty-seven, amending ordinance number nineteen eleven, which adopted the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for publication, providing for an effective date. No changes since first reading. Any questions, council?
Move to approve, automatic is presented.
Have motion, have second.
Second.
Have motion and two seconds. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye, unanimous. Item number nine, consider approval on second final reading of ordinance nineteen fifty, amending the code of ordinances, chapter one oh-two utilities, article two, water service, division three, service charges by amending the water rates and fees for all customers, providing for validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date, and I have got Kathy Kane wants to talk about this.
So Kathy Kane, one oh-nine boardwalk. A little over a year ago, I spoke out as an out-of-city customer of water and wastewater. I asked the council to not increase the rates without justification. As you know, the council voted to increase the rates. We exercised the right to petition to the PUC to hear our case. The PUC agreed with the petitioners and asked the city to validate that the overages charged in twenty twenty-three be returned appropriately when a clerical error was used as the excuse to not raise the rates. This back-and-forth game has been ongoing for eight-plus months, and the city has still not satisfied the PUC's requirements. As a clarification point to what has been stated in meeting minutes and by council member Hatman, my brother Andrew has not sued the city. He didn't sign the petition. I am officially the petitioner and represented by my brother Pat. We worked very hard on this petition and got over a thousand signatures. The PUC has taken over control of it. All we did was start the game when you voted on September fifth last year to charge forty-seven percent usually unsubstantiated rate increase. Our concern was validated by the recent rate study that was conducted by an outside firm that stated a smaller number is justified. With that information in your hands, how can you vote for the rates proposed today for your out-of-city waste and wastewater customers? They are more than the recommendations by that rate study. I ask you to reconsider the rates for non-city residents and lower them to the suggested rates as outlined in the study. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Mr. Sherrell, any changes?
No, no changes. Good, mayor.
Questions, council? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept item nine as written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any further question? Not will call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye, unanimous. Item number ten, consider approval on second final reading of ordinance number nineteen fifty-one, amending code of ordinances, chapter one oh-two utilities, article four, surcharge revenue account by amending section one oh-two four oh-one, surcharge to increase surcharge fee, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Mr. Sherrell, no changes since first reading. Your pleasure, council.
I did speak with some members of the local fire departments, and they were very appreciative of us trying. This does give them a little bit more, potentially gives them some more funds at the end of the day, and they were very appreciative of it. And with that being said, I move to approve item ten as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye, unanimous. Item number eleven, consider approval on second final reading of ordinance number nineteen fifty-two, amending code of ordinances, chapter one oh-two utilities, article one and general sections one oh-two dash one, one oh-two dash three, one oh-two dash seven, one oh-two dash nine, article two, water service, section one oh-two dash twenty-eight, and adding section one oh-two dash fifteen regarding amending fees, adopting additional fees for utility services, including meter tampering fees, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Mr. Sherrell?
No, no changes, mayor.
No changes since first reading. Council, your pleasure.
I move to approve item eleven as presented.
I'll second.
Have motion and a second. Any further question? Not will call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye, unanimous. Number twelve, consider approval on second final reading of ordinance number nineteen fifty-three, amending code of ordinances, chapter one oh-two utilities, article three, wastewater service, division four, service charges by amending wastewater rates for all inside-city customers, providing for validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Mr. Sherrell?
No, no changes.
No change. Your pleasure, council.
Move to approve item twelve as presented.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Have a second. Motion and a second. Any further question? Call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye, unanimous. Item number thirteen, consider approval on second final reading of ordinance number nineteen forty-two, granting a conditional use permit for the purpose of allowing the use of park model RV in an office on the property located at twenty-five sixty-two FM thirty thirty-six, also known as a eight seventy-six Joseph Hollis survey, two-point-one, yeah, two-point-one-three-one acres, City Rockport, Ransburg County, Texas, subject to compliance with conditions stated within this ordinance as well as those stipulated in City Rockport code of ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. So this is the cup request that was tabled last meeting for more information, and staff comes before you again this evening asking that you deny this cup. This was built, installed, electrical run to it, plumbing run to it, with no permits, no consultation with the city at all. It is an RV. It's not a tiny home. It's not stick-built. It is a park model RV, and RVs are not allowed in any zoning district except RV parks. And if we pass this tonight, I just shudder at the thought of the cups that are going to come before you after this. Other folks want an RVs in their front yards, and it's just, it's just circumventing the zoning ordinance. In the paperwork that Ms. Bertina submitted herself, it is a park model RV. It's not a tiny home, as she has described it to be. In the engineering report from her engineer, it is a tied-down report for a park model RV. I behoove you, do not pass this cup, please.
And this is the same one the lady talked to us about the last meeting?
I don't think she was here. She was here the first meeting.
Two meetings back.
Two meetings ago.
Yes, and the neighbors came and or objected as well.
Yeah, okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
So I'm just gonna go back. I've had, I'm the person that can push back this. I push back, I think we are setting the wrong precedents. I don't think we should go ahead and go against recommendation from our city staff. They feel very strongly about it. I do think that there's a better way to handle these things. I don't believe that we should approve this. Okay, I mean, so I'm not sure how the other council members feel, but I'm, I would make a motion to deny it right now.
I have a motion to deny on second reading.
Do you have a written comment?
Yeah, you are. Didn't see your card over here. It's halfway under my notebook.
You have a promise? After this passing unanimous at P and Z, everybody on this council voted for it on the first reading. I emailed all of y'all to enlighten you that a three-hundred-and-ninety-nine square foot RV is a three-hundred-and-ninety-nine square foot RV for one purpose only. It's to avoid property taxes, and we bought four of them last year. So I tried to do one of these ten years ago. My mother-in-law's house had empty lot. I went to the building department, told them what I wanted to do. They told me it wasn't allowed. I didn't do it. So if you want to do this, then change the ordinance, but I think we'd be wrong to allow a cup to do it in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. I have a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny.
Do I have a second? I do have a second. Motion and a second. Any further question?
Just on some discussion, and I agree with Mr. Kane. You know, the cup is there for a reason, and when we originally approved it on the first reading, if you will, against staff's recommendation, more information was brought to us, and I don't think the cup is the best, this is the best use of it. And I believe that we do need to look at our zoning ordinances and maybe try to improve some of those moving on down the road, you know, so we're not handcuffed into such, I don't want to say restrictive zoning, but maybe there's other opportunities for zoning changes in there. And, but that's something that go through P and Z and staff and everything, and then come to us if there needs to be those other zoning opportunities. I just don't, I don't, I don't think using a cup is the right, right way to go about this one here.
All right. And I think that it probably reminds us that we need to try as best we can to see that we got proper staff folks here that were involved. I know Ms. Dietrich was not around when we first had this come up, and might be times that we're just as well off postponing something until you can be back, but we appreciate that. I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not I'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye, unanimous. It is denied. Item number fourteen, consider approval of resolution twenty-four dash twenty-one, R, appointing members to the convention and visitor bureau and establishing terms of office.
So in your packet, I provided a breakdown of what the boarding commission's duties and composition is, and I also provided you all the applications and a table of how they are qualified. So we have members to appoint, and you also need to appoint a city council member. So you have six members, one of them being a city council. They will serve two terms, and then in the ordinance, it provides a staggered. I also provided a resolution, so when you appoint these, you'll have to amend the resolution to include those names.
So those are the only applications that were received?
Yes.
So I have a couple concerns. I think maybe there's, how many are there? There's seven, I believe, right?
There's six.
Six. Four out of the six, I can see putting in where I think they're great. I'm not against it, but two of them I do have concerns. Not, I don't think they're, are they in the crowd tonight?
There's actually seven.
Is there seven?
There's seven applicants.
That's what I thought.
Seven applicants, but you'll point six members.
Point six members. I have concerns about the two. I don't know the background. I don't really see any beyond putting somewhere. I don't see a background of what they could do to help with that certain bucket that you're putting them in. For me to go forward, I'd be okay with four, but I think I would like to get somewhere. I understand it's hard to get applications, but I would like to get more applications in so we can fit it in the right buckets and make sure it's a right fit, instead of just going yes because they applied. I just don't want to do a blanket yes because someone applied and we have to go put them somewhere, but.
So point the ones you want, and then we can do an interview of individuals that are in question.
Sir, also, I know that there's an area that's kind of a bit of a comment, a bit of occupational information, and then it just doesn't feel like indicating or starting a portion of it. But there, I don't feel like there's like a whole lot of area for us to review, like their qualifications to support that position within the board that they're applying for.
So there was a person who turned in a resume. That wasn't the requirement, but she did turn in a resume. There are just the areas that we have to take, you know, their word for if they, you know, fit those sections.
Well, I mean, we can verify that they meet the qualifications that are.
Some of them.
I would say not meet the qualifications of the ordinance, but the qualifications that are required within the position that they're being appointed to. Like, you're not going to want to put somebody in a restaurant sector position that does hotel motel. Does that make sense?
Right.
You're not going to want to put someone that's focused with experience in restaurant and the art sector. We need to know that the qualifications that are coming in was supported. And there's not an area in which was provided where, outside of the occupation, that that information is provided. I don't want to make it any more difficult, but I definitely want to make it just where we have that supportive information to know because it's so important. And these are terms that are extended into, you know, a good period of time that we're doing this right, and we're putting the right people in the right spot. We're pretty certain, well, I mean, I know she had said four, I'm pretty good on four, but I want to ensure that we're putting the right people in the right spot.
So four of the members, we know for sure, meet those categories, but they didn't provide.
Yeah. I mean, I know Louis Perron, I mean, that's Art Center, Team Dr. He is, he does the hot funds. He does, he owns lodging. Craig Griffin owns Charlotte Plumbers, and he's on the TDC board, and he's the president of the TDC board, so that's his qualifications on there. And then Jennifer Day is the Arcad and historical things. Those four, I can be comfortable not having to go back to have a due-hole interview process. So.
There's nothing to exclude you from asking for more information.
Yeah, but I would like to have, I guess, I'll get the thoughts of the other council members before I make anything, so.
I think because I'm so familiar with the ones we just discussed, I wouldn't need additional information because of how familiar I am with those applicants. But to move forward, you know, if you were, what if we had a really good qualified applicant with, if not from this area, just relocated, but tourism has hurt things? There's not an area within that application that she could really provide that information for us to make a strong conclusion that she is the right applicant versus somebody that may have minimal experience, but is the only other applicant against her. Go ahead.
So in the future, we could ask for a resume?
I would be fine with that.
As we interviewed our candidates, oh, good point, we've done the nominations committee. For all of us. Who else?
Now we have to nominate the nominations.
Yeah, we got, now we got a nominee.
Yeah.
Why don't we just go out and ask for resumes from everybody that's applied, and then you can reconsider this at the next meeting?
Can we open it back up?
It stays open all the time.
Public.
And we keep it on-bid for one year.
Right.
So it's always open.
Can we just push some more information and see if we can get, if we're gonna push this off to the next for review? Push to see if we can get some more applicants in there, especially now, you know, we can review it in whole for each one.
Just put a push out there on social media and all of our things to say, hey, we need some more applicants for the Tourism Convention Board, or whatever we call it, the Convention and Visitor Bureau, and then let's request their CVs or resumes, whatever we call them today.
So, yes, sir. And the convention of, like, if I can post a job, I have made a promise that this board could help pick the person that we're hiring, but I would like to not get poorly behind on posting the position. So I think those two could run successfully. Okay.
I wholeheartedly, yeah, let's post the position and start getting, start getting those applications coming in. I move to postpone item fourteen.
Have motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Which is next meeting? Good. Are you, do I want to push it out to meetings so you get more? No, just one, okay.
No.
Postpone it to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Can we have a second? Can I just make one more? We require these people who are applying for these boards, and this is not just this board, but any board, they need to be at a city council meeting so that we can meet them and if we have questions from them, they're here.
So you want to do an interview?
I don't necessarily need to do the interview, but if they're gonna apply for boards, they should be here in person. I mean.
So we could do an interview during executive session?
I don't necessarily need the interview, but I think that if you're gonna apply for a board, you should be here in case there's a question that arises that we need to ask you.
You want them to attend the meeting that they're appointed at?
Yes. I feel like that should be.
The advantage we generally have on those things is they come through the wards of the council people down here, and it's people that they know. And unlike them, four of these people I know real well, but I don't know the others. And there's not much information on there to base a decision on.
Bless you.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not let's call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye, it's unanimous. Postpone till next regular meeting. Yes, sure, go right ahead.
All right. As y'all know, I said I served as a council member for a couple years. We had, we picked like the fifth Monday of a, of a, you know, of a meeting when we didn't have a standing meeting, and had everybody that was interested in participating, and it usually was right around the time that we did elections. We had elections, so like that May-June timeframe, and we advertised what the roles were that we had. We had terms, we had term limits, and we interviewed them and said, we have five, you know, boards that we would like, you know, that we need citizen participation in, and we got a lot of people that came, and we found really good people to serve on boards that they hadn't even considered because they didn't really understand what it was. But when we presented, this was the intent, this is what you would do on the board, we got a lot of people to participate. It would be great if you could say, yes, I attend P and C, but the reality is most people don't show up unless they have something, you know, skin in the game. But if you advertise it and make it a, an opportunity to come and learn more about how the city government works, I think you'll be very pleased with that. And that's just what we did. It's not the only way of doing it, but it worked very well in a very small town. There were like five thousand citizens, so just as a thought, so.
Thank you. All right. Item number fifteen, consider approval of a construction change directive number three related to the new city hall. Kimberlin?
You got three minutes. I'm gonna keep it real short. So this is a construction change order number three, and it is to install a door on the utility building that is for the generator out back behind the building, and for whatever reason, we just forgot to put a door on it. So of course, it needs to be secured. So we are now including a door, and then also the fire pump room, the wall kind of runs into a window area. So we are, that is being proposed to be moved over like about seven inches and then into the wall. And this time, we do not have for sure the dollar figures. There is a proposed, but that has not been finalized. Those are still being negotiated. So there is no dollar figures associated at this time. Any questions?
Go ahead.
The group that was helping us design this, there was a couple of things, and I apologize, you've given me their name before.
PGIL.
PGIL. There were a couple of things that I guess they missed. I don't know if these qualify for them, that they were gonna help cover some of the costs. Just any chance either one of these two qualify for something they missed?
Those are still being negotiated, yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a chance we'll get some of this back?
It's, there's give and take in all directions.
There's a chance.
I'm gonna jump on that, sorry. The architectural, typical architectural error is somewhere in the area of five percent of the problem. We are under one percent, so I think that chance is low. On these items.
No.
Yeah.
On these items.
But we have other opportunities, it sounds like.
You know what, if you want, there'd be a chance there would be.
You said one percent. There's a chance.
One percent.
It's just real slim.
Thank you.
I got a real list down there.
Thought, I thought I'd ask.
Yes.
I played a lot already, man, we'll see.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve agenda item fifteen. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? If not, we'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor aye. Are we doing executive session?
Nope.
Oh, come on.
We already did sixteen and seventeen. Reports from council.
I don't actually have too much to report this week, since we just kind of came off from last week. Everything outside of council's been pretty busy, but nothing specifically needing to be reported on.
Thank you. Ward two.
I have one thing from Ward two. Last Friday night, I was fortunate to attend the Humane Society's event here in town. That's about the fourth year I've got to, been invited to go do that, and just wanted to remind everybody, that's a place that's special and my wife and I's heart here in town. Great event, record number of people, record number of dollars raised for the Humane Society here in town, and don't forget, if you've ever got a donation for them, they're always willing to, to take items and what have you. They can give you a list of what they need, but great event, fortunate to go.
All right. Ward three.
I've got nothing.
Ward four.
I just want to make a public meeting announcement. On September twelfth, at two-thirty PM at the Service Center here in Drews, gonna be, City Rockport's gonna invite all questions and answers, a public meeting. Mr. Veen, discuss the revoked special event ordinance. So this is just a chance for you to learn more, ask questions, or invite your feedbacks.
And that'll be at two-thirty on September twelfth at the Service Center.
I have nothing.
Motion, Judge. Second.
We're adjourned. It is nine eighteen.